... the flag of the United States of America. Would you repel other religious fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Andrea, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Demeté?
Here.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Here.
Commissioner Powers?
Here.
Commissioner Woodward?
Here.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody, to today's Planning Commission meeting. It is open virtual and in person and may be observed online through Placer County website. In an effort to encourage the public to engage in the process, public comment at this meeting will be offered remotely. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, consent agenda, and timed items. Each commenter will be entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. Please be advised that today's hearing is being recorded. Next, we'd like to swear in our newly appointed Mark Watts from County Council. Andrea? Will you swear in, Mark? Please, thank you.
Okay. I, insert your name, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I, Mark Watts, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take that obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Mark, would you like to say anything?
Just briefly, I'd like to thank the appointments I had received from previous supervisors for the time I spent on the North Auburn MAC, Supervisor Montgomery originally, Supervisor Holmes, and Supervisor Gustafson, and I've enjoyed the time working with them, and I look forward to working with the board here, the commission here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. I'd like to ask Chris Schmidt to come up and give his report for the directors.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Schmidt, on behalf of Planning Director Chris Bukhuli. First off, welcome, Commissioner Watts, on behalf of staff. We look forward to working with you. Just a reminder to the Commissioners that the California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy is coming up March 29th through 31st. I know a few of you have signed up for that informational retreat. A couple of items coming up to the Board of Supervisors, a beekeeping ordinance that you provided a recommendation on is going to be heard by the Board on March 14th. The DFA variance that you heard on January 12th was appealed, so that is scheduled to go to the Board on March 28th. We are canceling the March 9th Planning Commission meeting. March 23rd will be the next meeting, will be held in Auburn. We have two items, a solar array project in Sheridan, and also the Creekview Ranch project, which is a 597 lot subdivision in the Dry Creek area. You heard that item on January 12th. We had the draft EIR hearing. So we are looking at potentially having a special meeting in April to debrief the Commissioners on the Training Academy and also to discuss adoption of government's documents for the Planning Commission. So we'll be reaching out to find a time that everyone's available in April. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
That special meeting?
Creekview Ranch, it's a large residential subdivision.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chris. Next, I will open public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. If there's anybody in person or on Zoom that would like to make a comment, please step up to the podium. You have three minutes. The red circle, there, it's on. It came on for you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Patty Nifer. I'm a resident of Penrin, and I'm here to talk about, not on the agenda, the Project Eight Winery and the structural height exemption. And that came up at the December meeting during an information item. I have a couple of questions and comments about Project Eight Winery. Based on the county's timeline, and it looks like it might have changed, this was going to be in front of you as an action item at the March 23rd meeting, but it doesn't look like it's going to be on there now. But the zoning text amendment would eliminate the height restriction for winery structures throughout Placer County. My first question is, in the past, zoning text amendment changes that affected the entire county would have been presented at the MACs throughout the county, all 13. And we've been informed that that's not going to be a case with the zoning text amendment for the winery exemption, that there will only be a public Zoom virtual workshop, and everyone would be invited to that, and that would be the public comment section. So there wouldn't be any MAC recommendations on that zoning text amendment for the exemption of heights throughout the county. So there'd be no advisor vote, no action item taken by the MACs, and very little opportunity for public comment on the zoning text amendment. My second question is that there's no EIR that I see being done for the winery height It seems that a countywide change in the limit for height structures should be significant enough for an EIR to be done. So when the winery project came before you, it was highly contested, there was lots of input, and I just really would like, Planning Commission had questions as well. So I'd just like to, it brought up the multiple unmitigated issues that it should be brought up, that it shouldn't be rushed through, so I urge you not to vote on the building height exemptions before it's really looked at, studied, and considered how it affects all of Placer County residents. And in closing, I had mentioned that there was a land use specialist that did an EIR on the Project Eight Winery comments to the EIR, and I'd like to be able to give that to each of you. The county, the residents took, you know, their own money and paid for that because it's not something that we're familiar with. So I would just like to be able to email you a copy and have the chance for you to look at the comments on the EIR for the winery before it comes before you again. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Patty. You can email that to Andrea, and she can get it out to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak on items not on the agenda today? Is there anybody online? Okay, this time I'll close public comment. We'll move to the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda, an extension of time for the Chabad of Roseville project, and an approval of the action agenda for the November 17th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Is there any members here that would like to pull anything? Anybody else want to pull anything? Okay, I will need a vote on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
For item A, we'll have to do each of them separately.
For item A.
I'll second.
And then for item B, I'd like to remind the commission that if a commissioner was absent from the meeting where the meeting minutes were being approved and did not watch the video, great.
I'm the only one.
Great, yep.
Okay, can I get a motion? I mean, a vote? Andrea?
I have a first from Commissioner Powers and a second from Commissioner Dahlgren. Commissioner Demeté?
Yes.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner, you weren't here, Watts, so abstain. Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, I need a, for the proof of November 17th.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second.
May I second that?
Oh, I just did.
You did, I didn't.
You have a first and a second.
I have a first from Commissioner Powers, a second from Commissioner Dahlgren. Commissioner Demeté?
Abstain.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Watts was an abstain, you were not here. Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're now moving on to the first timed item, the Penrin Townhouse Tentative Subdivision Map and Conditional Use Permit Modification and Extension of Time. Members of the public may raise their hands, press star nine if you are calling in to begin, queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Kara Conklin will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome, Commissioner Watts. I'm Kara Conklin with the Planning Services Division, and the item being presented to you this morning is the Penrin Townhomes Tentative Subdivision Map and Conditional Use Permit Modification and Extension of Time Request. Before I start the presentation, I do want to let Commissioners know that we have Michelle Lewis with Engineering and Surveying Division, and Lisa Matos with Baker Williams Engineering Group, who is the applicant representative today, if you have any questions after the presentation. And with that, we'll get started. All right, so the 3.2 acre project site is located on the east side of Penrin Road, just north of Interstate 80, and the southern boundary here is located adjacent to a commercial center that you can see right off of the highway there. The zoning is neighborhood commercial combining design scenic corridor. So the original approved project was approved as a planned residential development that includes 23 townhomes within seven separate buildings and three common ownership lots. Common Lot A includes open space areas, walking and equestrian paths, and landscaping along the project's frontage and perimeter. Lot B is located within the center of the project and would be utilized as passive recreation area that includes tables, benches, and a decomposed granite path. Lot C includes the interior loop road, parking areas, and the trash enclosures. And so just a little item of note here on the map, you can see right here, this is the emergency vehicle access location that was approved on the original tentative subdivision map that is located east of lots one and two and goes out to the northern property, or to the adjacent property to the north. The approved project, these are, this is the materials board that was approved with the design review that was part of condition of approval number three within the original approved project, and these are renderings of what the townhomes would look like once they're built. So the proposed project requires a modification to the emergency vehicle access location, which requires a conditional use permit modification and a tentative subdivision map modification. And the applicants are also requesting a two-year extension of time request. All right, so the original EVA is located here on the north portion of the property, east of lots one and two, and goes out to the adjacent property owner to the north. However, the applicants were unable to secure that easement to go into the property owners to the north, so they have proposed to relocate the EVA, which will still be located on the east side of lots one and two. It'll just go along the northern boundary, wrap around those lots, and then exit out to the Penrin Road right-of-way. And so just to get into a little bit of the project history, it has a long history. The project was originally approved by the Planning Commission on October 11th at that time for the tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit, and also the mitigated negative declaration was adopted at that time. The project was appealed and went to the Board of Supervisors on January 8th, 2008, where the Board denied that appeal and upheld the Planning Commission's approval. Once that was approved, it had two years of validity for the project, and then was allowed several map extensions through Senate Bill 1185, and then Assembly Bills 333, 208, and 116. That was a total of seven years of statutory extensions and gave the project an expiration date of October 11th, 2017, at which time the applicant came in and applied for another two-year extension of time per the Subdivision Map Act, and was granted that two-year extension that expired in October 11th of 2019. Then they came in again on October 2019 and applied for their additional two-year extension of time request, and was granted that one with an expiration date of October 11th, 2021. So in April of 2021, the applicants also came in for their required design review for the project, and that was executed per condition of approval number three. Then in September of 2021, the project was granted a statutory 18-month extension from Assembly Bill 1561, and that gave the project an expiration date of April 11th of this year, 2023. Last April 2022, the applicant submitted their first submittal of the final map, and later on in April of 2022, the project was approved for a rough grading permit that allowed for tree removal and rough grading of the project site. Improvement plans are currently under review for their third submittal. And on December 30th, staff received an application for the tentative subdivision modification and conditional use permit modification to realign the EVA road, and also receive, the projects received their third and final extension of time request to allow them enough time to get their improvement plans completed and get their final map recorded. So with the project modification, we do need to update mitigation measure XVIV, which is under the Traffic and Transportation Resource of the mitigated negative declaration. And so that also required an addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration due to changing that mitigation measure. Basically, all it's saying here in the red underline, which is the addition, is just the location of the new EVA, and then the requirements that EST and the Fire Department are needing for that EVA. So the original addendum was evaluated in 2007, and as staff was going through, we identified some resources that weren't evaluated at that time. And so we went ahead and took a look at greenhouse gas emissions, VMT, which is under the Traffic and Transportation Resource, energy, and wildfire. And based off of the modified project's description, the Environmental Review Committee, ERC, concluded that the modified project would not result in any new significant impacts, nor would it result in a substantial increase in the magnitude of any significant environmental impact that was previously identified in that ISMND. So again, just to take a look here at the previously approved EVA and the revised EVA, that is pretty much the only modification that is being proposed today, just a little change in moving, oops, in moving lots one and two just a little forward so that they can accommodate that EVA right there. And with that, staff's recommendation for your Planning Commission today is to take the following actions. Number one, adopt the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Penrin Townhomes project, subject to the findings contained within the staff report. Number two, to approve the modified Penrin Townhomes Tentative Subdivision Map, subject to the modified conditions of approval and the findings contained within the staff report. Number three, to approve the conditional use permit modification, subject to the modified conditions of approval and the findings contained within the staff report. And number four, to approve the two-year extension of time request for the Penrin Townhomes project, subject to the modified conditions of approval and the findings contained within the staff report. And with that, staff is available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara, does anybody from the commission have any questions for staff? Any, is the applicant here? Would they want to present anything?
Yes.
If you'd like to step up to the podium, if you wanted to say something.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Mattis with Baker Williams Engineering Group, and we've been working on this project for a while. We were not the original engineer on the job. We, a new owner bought it, and they had us start at the end of 2018. The EVA, we did try to work with the owner to the north of us to get the EVA on their property, but understandably, they were not willing to encumber their property with a 24-foot easement. We also approached the owner to the south of us, the commercial complex, to see if we could work out something through the commercial project, and also we were unable to do that. So lastly, we squeezed our own site, and we were able to work out something that's acceptable to the Fire Department and to engineering and survey and planning. So this is the modification that we're proposing. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lisa. Does anybody have any questions for Lisa?
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa, I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
I will now open public comment for anybody who would like to comment on this subject. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Patty Nifer, Penrin. Two quick comments. One, Kara already answered, that the road width at Penrin Parkway would still remain part of the conditional use to build it, because one of the things that we as a community really liked is the project is set back a little bit. There'll be equestrian, bicycle, and hiking path in front of it, and then the road, Penrin Parkway, will be expanded as is required in the Penrin community plan. The second comment is, construction hasn't begun, but all the trees have been taken out, and the gravel has been moved, and it looks like a construction site. So if there's any way for the next two years to sort of screen it a little bit, or to make it not look like an open construction site when you come into the Penrin community, that would be very much appreciated. The equipment has been moved, which is nice, but it still looks like a construction site.
Thank you, Patty. Anybody online? Andrea? No. Anybody else from the public would like to comment on this? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to come back to the Commissioners. Do they have any questions for staff or for Lisa? Okay, I'll ask for a motion if we're ready.
Anthony, I'm sorry, just a quick question since there was a question. Kara, is there any kind of requirement or anything like that with regards to an open construction site and screening requirements that might be levied upon the developer?
So as you can see from the site plan, it is located right off of Penrin Road, right there. There is fencing, construction fencing around the trees that were to be saved. There isn't construction fencing just off of the road, but it is screened back and is kind of up from the hill, but we could ask that they put up fencing if that's something that the commission would like.
I mean, if it's just a conversation with folks, that might be reasonable.
Yeah, I think we can discuss that and see if, talk to, if we could bring Lisa back up and ask her for what they could do to make it look not so like a construction site for her client.
We'll have to look into that. I've never been asked that before to see what type of, we were talking some type of fence solid that can kind of screen it, so we'll have to look into that to see if there's anything we can do. It is going to be an active construction site. I mean, once we move back on, it's going to be going, and the developer intends to build it out and build the building. So we can research if there's any type of temporary fence that could be put up to screen it. We can check into that.
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Yes, absolutely.
The whole idea for the two-year extension is because it expires in April of 2023, but once this is approved, you're going to go through that process, and construction's going to resume fairly quickly, correct?
Correct.
Yes, so it's not going to be two years from now, it's going to look like a construction site. It's going to look like a construction site now for two years while you're doing the work. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I think, Patty, that it's going to be a construction site for two years, but I don't think it's going to be a blank, you know, just sitting there for two years. They just had to get through changing that easement or that EVA. So I think you're going to be okay. You're going to look at construction for a couple of years, not for five more years.
Thank you for the clarification. We thought it would be empty like that for two years.
So with that, with that said, I don't really think it's necessary to go asking.
I would agree with you. Thank you for that.
Okay.
I think it's going to stay clean. I don't think it's going to look like a war zone there, so it'll, and I live, I have a place in Penrin, so to me, it doesn't really look that bad, so as long as it's kept clean, which I'm sure it will be, I think the residents will be fine.
Right, once we have approved plans, the equipment will move back on, and they're going to go fast, so that's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
And I think it's just because they can't get that done by April.
For sure.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it. So if we're ready.
With that, I think Commissioner Woodward sounded like he was going to make that.
I'm glad to. So I move that we adopt the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Penrin Townhomes project, subject to the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
We have a roll call, please. We have a first and a second on item one.
I have a first from Commissioner Woodward, second from Commissioner Powers. Commissioner Demeté?
Yes.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Watts?
Did you say Watts?
Yes.
I answer yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you.
For the move, we approve the modified Penrin Townhomes Tentative Subdivision Map, subject to the modified conditions of approval and the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I have a first from Commissioner Woodward, second from Commissioner Powers. Commissioner Demeté?
Yes.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Watts?
Aye.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you.
For the move, we approve the conditional use permit modification, subject to the modified conditions of approval and the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
Approval, please. Roll call, please, I'm sorry.
I have a first from Commissioner Woodward, second from Commissioner Powers. Commissioner Demeté?
Yes.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Watts?
Aye.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you.
For the move that we approve the two-year extension of time request for the Penrin Townhomes.
for the Penrin Townhomes project, subject to the modified conditions of approval and the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
I have a first from Commissioner Woodward, second from Commissioner Powers. Commissioner Dematte?
Yes.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Watts?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you.
This item can be appealed. The decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment on, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $688. Thank you. Next. We're moving on to our second timed item, a second amendment to the Placer Ranch Specific Plan Development Agreement. Members of the public may now raise their hands. Press star nine if you are calling in to begin queuing for the public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Michelle Kingsbury will kick off this presentation item.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. Michelle Kingsbury with the Community Development Resource Agency. The item before you for recommendation to the board is to approve the second amendment to the development agreement for the Placer Ranch specific plan, which is located in West Placer, west of Highway 65 and north of the city of Roseville. The second amendment is what I, it's a technical amendment to replace two exhibits that were in the original development agreement. Those would be exhibits B1 and B2, which are the legal description and, and project, legal and description of the university parcel that was contained within the original development agreement. There were minor errors in that legal description, so we need to replace with the corrected descriptions that were included in this package. With that, that is probably the briefest presentation I've ever made. This is a very just technical amendment that with your recommendation, we'll proceed forward to the board in March to clean up this technical error in the development agreement.
Wow, you're making my job easy today.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make it hard. I forgot to do a PowerPoint with the recommendation. But the recommendations are included within page two of your package on this item.
Got it, thank you. Any commissioners have any questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Applicant Representative Chris Stewart is here, correct?
Okay. Welcome, Chris.
Good morning. We don't have any comments. This is a minor technical item. We appreciate your support.
Okay. I will now open public comment for this item, if there's anybody from the public online. Somebody here? I'm going to close public comment. Any other questions from commissioners on this subject? Okay, I will ask for a motion, please.
I'm happy to do it, let's.
Oh, can we put the motion up on?
We don't have one.
Oh, that's right.
So I'm happy to do it and bear with me, Michelle. You want items 1 and 2 read completely, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Do we have to do those separately?
You do have to do them separately. On item two, I might recommend something like, adopt an ordinance approving the second amendment to the Placer Ranch Specific Plan Development Agreement based on the findings contained in the staff report, so that you don't have to read items A, I through V.
Okay.
So just based on the following items, I'm just finding.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yes, please do them separately.
Thank you.
I'll make a recommendation that the Planning Commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors determine that the second amendment to the Placer Ranch Specific Plan Development Agreement is consistent with the previously certified final environmental impact report and that it is exempt from further environmental review pursuant to SEQA guideline section 15061B3-general rule.